I'm going to call this meeting of the Halifax Planning Board for Thursday, April 4th, 2024, to order. I need to announce that the Planning Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube. We are located at the Select Men's Meeting Room here in Halifax Town Hall at 499 Plymouth Street. I think the first thing we probably ought to do is approve the agenda. I don't know if you all had a chance to look at it, there's only a few items on it.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as it is written.
Seconded. We were going to second it to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? Vote unanimous. Our first appointment this evening is 24 Special Permit 244, Arnold Vera. Is it Vera or Wera?
Wera.
Wera.
Wow.
I have a 50/50 shot again.
Yeah, it's tough to pronounce this on 50.
And this is being presented by Joe Webby from Webby Engineering.
Joe Webby from Webby Engineering, with the lot going by Ani Vera. And Ani has purchased a lot, vacant lot, that is owned by Richard Harrison, and it's right next door to 395 Plymouth Street, and just situated, the car wash is right over where Mark can green. And this is the lot, it's an acre lot, 20,000 square foot lot. We also have a BVW associated with the neighboring lot, and a little bit of this is wetlands. We have our 50-foot and 100-foot setbacks. And what Ani currently has a business where he transports vehicles all over the country. So if you've got a car that you want to go to Florida, you drop it off here, or he picks it up, puts it in a car carrier, and he takes it away to where it is, and then ultimately brings it back. So he needs a garage for his, he has two trucks, transport cars, so that he would like to build a garage. And then a little bit in conjunction with that, he wants, he needs an office space, and he wants a one-bedroom apartment above that office. We do have a rendering that we can certainly look at, but basically what we're trying to do is we have a stormwater management basin. We also kind of have a septic system on this side, and then we're going to have an in-and-out for the driveway. And basically, that's what he'd like to do.
Just out of curiosity, I have some recollection that there was a previous plan presented for a different type of structure?
Not from me.
Not from you? Or maybe I've got to confuse another property?
I didn't, this is the first plan I've done.
Okay.
Yeah.
I take it you've done all the calculations?
Yes, we have. We submitted stormwater management, a couple of big ones that I assume we're going to send off to your area review engineer. Look at all this, this is in a commercial business zone, so we feel that the garage is, is owned for what he wants his use. I don't know about the apartment upstairs, so that might be part of a special permit I don't know.
For mixed use.
I think you should probably get a zoning determination from the zoning enforcement officer to begin with. What do you anticipate for traffic in terms of?
He's not going to have a day-to-day traffic.
If someone's coming in...
Not just me, it's one-one person. I don't have employees or nothing, so it's just, not like it's a fleet of trucks going in and out, it's just pretty much out one day and probably back in 10 days.
Yeah.
Not like a lot of volume traffic at all.
Doesn't seem like a lot of impact.
The apartment would generate eight foots a day if it was like...
So what would the apartment be for yourself, or you rent it out?
Yeah, just coming in town, and I don't want to here for show period, and I leave. I try to spend some time in the south where it's warm. Amen.
Yeah, I hear that.
In the summertime, I would spend a little more time here.
Where it's not hot.
Yeah, exactly.
So this is, this is in the historical district too, so how does that...
Yeah.
Have you taken the historical, been to the historical?
We're going to have to go through the historical society.
And then there's Concom, too, have you?
Yeah, yeah, we just have already filed with conservation.
Are we going to send out for, within 30 days, we get feedback from all the boards sent to us?
Yeah, we'll have to do that. Should we wait to have you go to Concom first before we send it out to review?
Well, Concom is going to want you to have...
Review?
Stormwater review, yes.
Either that or they do.
I know it's one of these.
Yeah, I know, I know, I'm just...
I was kind of hoping that you would send it out at least so we could be doing two of them simultaneously.
Ten years.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, we're willing to put money in for Patrick, whether he's in there.
So is that pretty much a rendition of what it's going to look like?
This is a quick rendition, but we do know we have the historical society, no, is it the society?
Commission.
Yeah.
Commission.
Ani's talking about dressing up that front just a little bit more.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a must with them, but that's...
I think to make it, you know, have curb appeal and blend in with the antique.
So you've got some landscaping island out front, too?
Yeah, for sure. The highest fence possible on the side, just to, you know, I can do my stuff out back.
Yeah, and nobody's... What's the setback from the street from Joe?
Right, sorry, because you have this one inch. So it's going to have this one, this one. A lot of tin-framed, well, half-framed buildings. I guess I'm going to have to scale that.
Yeah, see it on, see it on here.
Part of the building from the street is about 68 feet.
Yeah, you've got a, you've got an arrow here at 66 to the apartment, yeah?
Right.
Let me see it.
What did you say?
Oh, that's all the problem.
66, yeah.
Yeah, 66, okay. That's from the lot line of the street, so that's good.
Yeah, it was pretty far.
No, it sits back nice.
I was trying to make it that way. I wish the property was a little deeper than that, I can't remember the new... Well, we got limited by this little...
Yeah, right.
You have a 100-foot buffer?
Well, it's the 50-foot.
It's the 50-foot, yeah.
Yeah, I'm worried.
It looks like your building's out of the 100-foot, though.
Yeah, just, yeah, the building's out, so we do have to go to conservation, but anything between the pink and the green.
Yeah?
Right.
It's really wet back there right now.
I don't know.
I mean, not on your property.
Yeah.
Yeah, why, yeah, out a little.
Yeah, right. Everything's super.
I know, but still, making a note.
Exactly.
I don't know, don't think we can just send it out?
Yeah.
That's it.
Come up with a number.
Do you want a motion to set up the revolving account?
Yeah.
Make a motion to set up a revolving account in the amount of like $2,000? Or do you want it to be higher?
How about $2,500?
$2,500?
Does that work for you? Can we live with that?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Say yes. You've got to come up with $2,500, yeah.
Whatever resists it, it goes back.
Easy for you to say, say yes.
It just makes it easier for, rather than having to keep going back to you.
They'll give it back any time they want.
Yeah, yeah. I have a motion, do I have a second? Second. Movement seconded to set up a revolving account with an initial deposit of $2,500 for 395 Plymouth Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? It sounds unanimous.
Change.
We're going to get it out as quickly as possible. Oh, sorry about that, I didn't ask if anybody had any questions.
Fred Correa, Seven Roswell, you said you need the garage for your trucks. What are you talking about for trucks?
I have two tractors, just pretty much for stores, you know, no look crazy maintenance or nothing.
Okay, now, when you say tractor, I can't see the size of the measurements on that garage. Does everything fit in that garage, or are you going to have something parked outside?
No, there'd be a couple of trails outside, one bigger than the other.
And now, when you're making these trips, I'm sure you're not, in most cases, not taking off to Florida with one car.
No.
So now you're waiting for other vehicles to come in. If I say, okay, I want my car to go to Florida, and you say, okay, do you already have a basic time when you're going, or do you have to wait until you get three, or four, or five, or six cars before you set up an appointment to run, and then where are those prospective cars going to be parked before you take off?
Yeah, I do six at a time. Probably 90% of my customers, well, I'd say probably 60% bring them to me. So the other, I have some customers on the North Shore that I would go pick up. So, yeah, as soon as they get six cars, that's when I go. I've been doing it for seven, eight years now, I've been in the trucking business for 25 years.
Where are those six cars while you're waiting to load? Let's say you've got...
They'd be in the back behind the building.
Not the garage?
I mean, if I did, some of them are, I have enclosed trailers, so some of them are $100,000 Porsches and stuff, so I would store those inside.
Okay. And now, in this garage, you've got to be doing any vehicle maintenance on your, on your own trucks? Oil changes?
No, it's cheaper, more cost-effective for me to sub it out, very minor stuff, you know?
Okay. So would you feel that you needed to have an oil pit in here relative to doing any fluids leaking from any of these vehicles?
We have.
There is one on the floor.
That's the law.
This floor, right?
Just to figure out asset.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's...
Run it into that issue.
Yeah, let's run it through the garages and everything.
Maybe as long as it's not set out apart on this one, right?
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
So we'll send it out for the other boards' review.
We'll go to Pat before you get back from Pat and then go off to conservation?
Well, I meant like, you know how we get within 30 days on a site plan, all of the boards send us any, any thoughts that they have?
Yep, we'll send it out simultaneously.
Yeah, we'll be fine. I suspect that you're going to be at least, like you say, 30 days to maybe a month and a half away.
Yeah.
But we'll be into conservation before then.
Yeah, that, that works better, that way they'll pull us together.
So March 19th, we have 45 days, that would mean that we have 11:30, 41, so May 4th.
Just going to keep track of it for any possible extensions.
Well, I mean, if we're looking right now at 30 days from today...
Yeah.
Maybe we should ask for an extension while they're here.
I don't think we have a form.
Well, we can always send it to them, but get it as a motion. Can we get a motion, the way I'm figuring out that the 45 days on-site plan is May 4th, so can we do an extension currently for another 30 days to put it to June 4th?
Yes, and, yes, and I was going to tell Ani this, and I was going to say, oh wow, is, I will not be available from May 20th till the end of the month also, so I think that that is going to get us into June.
Okay, so why don't we do like a 45 so that there's like a little buffer on it? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, you agree to that, if we send it to you or Mr. Wera?
You can send it to me, and I'll sign it and send it back.
Okay, all right, do we need to make a motion on that? Should I?
Why not?
Okay. Extension on the site plan review from the expiration date of May 4th to 45 days from that, bringing it to June 4th, am I, hold on, June 19th? Thank you.
Sometime.
June 19th.
Sometime.
Is that okay? So there's my motion?
Could be your second meeting in June or whatever.
Yeah, so we have June 20th meeting.
June 20th, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, we nailed it down. Can I get a second for that? Second. Movement seconded to extend the hearing until June 20th.
No, extend the site plan available. Yeah, yeah.
Until June 20th.
Aye.
All the rest of us in favor?
Aye.
Any of us opposed? No. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Next up, Pat Jalane, and we have, well, we did have our...
He's there, but...
Ah, there he is. Have you unmuted, Rich?
Yes. I think he's trying. There he is.
I can hear you guys.
Oh, okay, we can hear you too, so that's good. Yeah?
Great.
We're, we're just entering the discussions about Pat Jalane, and we're trying to figure out what we can do or what we can't do, and any feedback you may have had from the owner of the lot in question and other attorneys, have they had any conversation with you?
Yeah, so the, Ms. Pat Jalane, the attorney for the owner of Lot 1, I've had some conversations with him, and he sent me an email that I forwarded to you guys a while back about what, what his clients is willing to do. He included a, what he calls a punch list of items.
Was that the list that was...
And then an email to me dated March 20th that I forwarded to you guys.
Is that the same punch list that we discussed a year and a half ago or two years ago?
Two and a half bucks. Sorry, I already read it.
Is that it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, two, that's the one that's dated 2018, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
5718.
Well, with that list, he came in at the last meeting that he was in attendance of, and took this list and said, willing to do this, not willing to do this, willing to do this, not willing to do that, can we agree on this? And we all said yes, and the resident said, if he can get that, we'll be more than happy. He said, all right, walked out the door.
And then we never heard from him again.
No, he came, we took down a bunch of trees and like...
Well, no, we, we...
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we addressed all of this, so, so that we know, so we can move forward. I know this is very frustrating for you guys.
So frustrating.
But what's also, keep talking about what's been done isn't helping, anything anymore at this point.
No, I didn't, no, I didn't find that.
Yeah, well, we had a very good conversation at the last meeting, which was brought up, so that's why we're here having this conversation now, but it's essentially what had happened, right?
Yeah.
He came in, said, yes, I'm willing to do all this stuff, the resident said, yeah, we're ready to rock, that was the last, we, sorry. Obviously, you guys saw the work that was started, 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 yeah, we'll say started and yet to be finished, so that's why I'm here to say, okay, well, that was also the list two years ago, so if we just say, okay, good, he's agreeing to this, it might be another.
Yeah, you know, hopefully the road hasn't deteriorated anymore since 2012.
Oh, it has, it has.
I know, but, and the problem's going to be getting to do anything at this point, and of course, without their participation, it's pretty frustrating to figure out if they're even still willing to do anything.
Well, here's my question, and maybe it's for you too, Attorney Hoxton, this property was held in a covenant, that when it was sold, they had two years to complete the work. It was sold in 2017, why is the town not putting a $300 fine a day on this gentleman for not completing work that is written into a covenant that the town has signed off on?
Have you read that?
Why are we just letting this man do whatever he wants? There's a covenant that said he had to finish it within two years of purchasing the property.
Although I think it was sent out.
There's the code right there.
Is it two pages?
No, no, that's...
That's a great question, because why aren't we doing this thing? And we feel very down by the town that everyone just keeps going with this.
Yeah.
Understand that?
I have a thought.
And he's spoken with the Attorney General, and he doesn't understand it either.
I think what Tina means is that, like, why wouldn't we fine them for not completing work just based on other violations, not on the covenant?
Well, first off, the covenant was against the original owner, so...
Right, it says it's sold, it needs to be completed within two years, so go after the original owner.
Did you hear any of that, Rich?
Yes, I did. So I understand it's a frustrating situation, but the covenant is not something that works like, okay, you have a covenant, and if you don't do the work, you get fined, that's, that's not the way it works. The way it's supposed to work is, is that for a subdivision covenant, that you're not supposed to be able to build upon or convey any of the lots in the subdivision until the work is done. So the problem here is that, and this is something that I see in a lot of different towns and with different moneyways, is that, that the, all of the, my, the facts that I, as I understand them, is that all of the lots except Lot 1 were released...
Yeah.
...from the covenant by, by vote of the Planning Board. So Lot 1 is the only one that the covenant still applies to, however, for somehow, and I, I don't understand really how this happened, apparently that that lot was sold even though it was subject to the covenant, that should not have occurred...
But that's on the town.
That's what the covenant is, you can't sell or build upon a lot until the work is completed. So that's part of the problem here, is that somehow that lot was sold even though there's a covenant on it.
I think that's why everybody's doing this.
So where does that responsibility fall?
So that's what I think we're trying to find out, right?
Well, we're trying to figure out how...
It was actually sold twice along the way. It's interesting that an attorney didn't pick up on that somewhere along the line doing any kind of title work.
Right.
It's because it was sold to a family member and then to another family member, so I don't, they, they registered a title through the registry of deeds.
Well, there should have been a municipal lien certificate that would have flagged it.
I understand, but...
No, I'm not saying it in that way.
Yeah.
I'm saying there should have been a municipal lien certificate that would have noted, yeah, when you're selling a property, you get a municipal lien certificate.
Yeah, but it wouldn't show anything about the covenant.
It should, it should.
But it should, it should flag it.
The town should have registered that, that registered deeds.
It, it was on record at the registry of deeds, so somebody doing their due diligence would have researched it.
So then it would be on the attorney, but we should also, in the town of Halifax, have these flagged so that if they're going up to sell to, that we should, because there's, what, three or four of them?
Yeah, I, I don't know that, I don't know that that, I would have to reach the council for that, I don't know.
How would the town ever lock it sold? Lock it sold privately, how would the town know it was sold?
Because the town has to be so well-armed to get out.
Somebody bought it cash, they might not even look for a municipal lien certificate. I mean, there's so many loopholes to this thing.
Well, there are loopholes, but...
Yeah, so, so we can talk about what to do moving forward, but that doesn't solve the problem of what to do now, right? So ultimately, again, back to this problem, which is what we're ultimately trying to solve, is what are our options moving forward other than not taking this developer's word for it, that he's good for it?
And at this point, he's not even getting back to us, right? I mean, other than that, he didn't actually say in the letter that they still agreed to do any of that, and he just, he just reiterated the conditions from that previous letter, right?
So, so this fellow, the owner of Lot 1, he's, you know, through his attorney, he's, he has said, here's what I'll do.
Okay.
You know, here's the work that I would do. And, and he also has talked about other, he wants an agreement, you know, including other things. I mean, the biggest of them, in my opinion, is that if we reached an agreement as to what work was going to be done and worked out the other procedural stuff, he says he wants a building permit for the lot before he does that work.
No way.
No way, no, that's what he advised you. So can you give him a building permit about occupancy?
Not do that, you know, because that's really...
No, but it doesn't mean somebody can occupy it.
...build the problem all over again, you know?
Right.
So, but, so just one thing I want to mention is that this, this fellow, Mr. Paquette and Key Point Construction, he, you know, he's not really as soft in that, he wasn't, as you guys know, he wasn't the original developer, he's not the one who failed to do this work, you know? He just, he bought Lot 1 when he shouldn't have been able to buy Lot 1, but now he owns it, and he's, and he's saying, you know, I'll do this work. So I think that's, that's a little bit significant, that he's, it's not like we're talking to the original developer here, this, this guy is really just a lot owner.
He's got to let us do our job, please.
I know, we know, we know, but too many people, there's a reason why we're, we're addressing this, and we get all the noise from the, so just, here's, here's what I think we've got to bring up, because trust me, it's not as frustrating for you guys, nor do we hate having this on our docket and sitting on our agenda literally every two weeks. So the problem is, I think you're right in the aspect of, he never should have been able to buy it, the problem is, is that two years ago, or whenever that was, it was him that came in, Mr. Paquette, specifically into this room and agreed to this list to say we will get this problem solved, to get everybody to back off this issue, and here we are, two to two and a half years later, still having the conversation, and it's now affecting people's property values in order to resell. So if that, what I heard was, if what he wants is the ability to build on that lot in order to do the rest of the work, well, then that is our biggest leverage point to say, if you want to build on that lot, then you need to do this work first, and that's what, that's what the agreement is going to have to be. Now, my next question is going to be, that's what the deal's always been, right? And so the next question is, or what? And I think that's where we've been getting stuck, is if he doesn't agree to move forward with this, what is the, what are the implications or the consequences to not finishing this list? Is there some kind of fine? Because ultimately, from a business balance sheet perspective, I hate to say this, but I think we all know, from a balance sheet perspective, if I'm him as a business owner, I'm going, I'll just let it sit, I don't really care, why am I going to spend $700,000 to make 300, it's bad business?
Can I ask just one more question?
So what's the...
Do we know what he paid for that, Rich? Do you have, did you ever look at the deed? I don't think I remember seeing like the...
25,000?
25,000? Yeah, okay, so he's not in on it, but he paid for it. Yeah, he's not into it for much, so that, that makes it equal.
It helps, but also, if it's going to cost a million dollars to finish the road and to build the property and to buy this house...
No, no, what I meant was, he's not into it for much that he considers it.
Right, right, right. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Back in old, back in old, what was it, 18, it was 156,000 to fix to finish the road in 2018.
It would still be less than that.
What do you think, renowned?
Well, it'd be more than that now, that was 18, it kind of cost a lot.
No, but if we could get that for you, it would have been comparable to our Key Point lot.
Yeah, well, he bought, he bought the lot, right, and he might have been able to get 150 at the time for, for a lot. It's not a really desirable lot. No, no, it's not, it's good issues, not to mention the landlot piece out behind it, which is another issue, but not, not for us.
So the big question is, is what's, what are the consequences, or what are our next viable options in, to be able to get it out of his possession, or, I mean, obviously we can't enforce any kind of penalty, because that's not what the covenant, what your advice or, or input on that is, so what is our, what are our options here? Because if what we are hoping for is that he's going to stay true to this list that we're discussing, we may as well just skip on past the conversation number two.
I mean, I think that's a very good point, because frankly, other than if it were possible to reach some, reach an agreement with this fellow and have this work done, that would be wonderful, if that, other than that, there aren't a lot of alternatives at this point, because it's all, you know, all of the, really the relevant things that happened, happened a long time ago, and, and under the subdivision control law, that we're beyond the statute of limitations where we could say, let's go to court and get a preliminary injunction against this guy and make him, you know, against the developer, and make him, you know, do the work that's required under the subdivision approval. That's, it's way beyond that time, so, and, and again, as I understand the facts, all the lots have been... all the lots have been released from the covenant except Lot 1. So there, there aren't a lot of alternatives, unfortunately.
With all due respect, we've been in here for the last 15 years. This isn't done.
Try to work with this guy who, you know, he's, he seems to have some willingness to do, to do work on the road. If, if it's unacceptable, you know, if it's not enough, if he has, you know, requirements and demands that are unreasonable, then okay, you know, then I'm not like telling you or trying to pressure you to reach an agreement with this guy. But if it were possible to do it, you know, on acceptable terms, it would be a good, you know, a good result in, in all the circumstances, I think.
So if we were to reach out to him again or through his attorney and say, get a definitive that he would be willing to perform as per the list, um, that we've already been discussing.
He's not, he's saying he's not willing to do that unless he gets a building permit.
Right, that's why I'm, I'm going on with.
Yeah, yes, what, what I think is, the, is the first question is, so he, you know, quite recently in this, this punch list that his attorney has sent to me, it includes a list of things that he's willing to do. I think the number one question to the board is, well, is that acceptable? You know, is that, is that okay with you guys? Is it not enough? Um, or would that be acceptable? In other words, to reach, if possible, some kind of agreement on the first issue, which is what work is he going to, would he do on the road? Because if you get, if there's no agreement on that, then what's the point of spending more time?
So I think that's the easiest part of the conver, I'm sorry, cut you off. I think that's the easiest part of the conversation is that the punch list has already been agreed upon, you know?
Yes.
Right, that's, that's the easy part is what is, what, in what pecking order though, right? Like he needs to do the punch list first and then get permission to build on the lot, but he's saying he wants it the other way around.
Yeah, I, I totally agree with you, but both what, I mean, he sent me this list that I forwarded to you in March that's, that's, you know, currently what he says he'll do. And, and that's, I think that's the question now. Is, is it, is it perfect, acceptable to the board? Is that not enough? Do you want, would you want more than that? I think that's, that's the question at this point.
I think that's the best we're going to get under any circumstances. I don't, I don't think we're going to do any better than that. And it may not be perfect and it's probably a little dated, but if we can get that much, I think that would be, you know, a huge win at this point.
And I hate to, I hate to put, be the stick in the mud of progress here, um, but again, I keep going back to this punch list was already agreed upon. So this one that he's recently forwarded over to is the same one that we discussed and he agreed to in person two and a half years ago and then didn't do anything on it. So now the question is, what happens if we say, yeah, sure, great, and then two and a half years from now, still nothing is done?
I mean, he must obviously know if he does the punch list, he's going to get his building permit, so why doesn't he just do it and get it over with?
Well, that's.
I, I don't get it. He's, he's getting, he's getting a lot of stuff knocked off what he really should do for the road, I mean.
No, that's right, exactly.
I mean, the, the road's not going to be up to town standards, I don't think what is done, you know, to, for him to complete what he's going to do here, but at this point, I guess, I don't know, Steve Goodweather, if the town's willing to just let it go and get it.
Well, the unfortunate thing is, it appears to be the best we're going to get on that one.
I know. It just, uh, it's kind of like, in, in the more, longer you wait, the more cost to finish the road and the, and the more deteriorate it's getting. You can't have a binder course as long as it's been on there and have it hold up. It's just, uh.
Originally, it was going to be cut, replaced, and then it was just going to be sealed.
Yeah.
And, you know, again, is it going to be what you'd want? No.
I thought he was going to put on two.
Two layers instead of three.
Two layers instead of three. Remember that's what he.
They're just counting one that it's already there, right?
Correct, right.
So he's only going to put one, one more layer on?
No, I thought it was on top of the binder.
No, it's not.
No.
I probably had to do three.
No, he wasn't going to end up with the amount of issues.
He's getting rid of one course, yeah.
So, so.
Okay, so is it just a new application? So there's a binder and then two other coats and this agreement is the binder and then another coat?
Probably just one coat over what's.
Well, he has to know what the binder is before we can even do.
He came, he came and he cut and he made a mess of the road.
Yeah, I remember that.
And left that, so it was a big war, so it was a mess. And he came and he cut down trees and left them.
Okay, do I remember that?
I, I, I hate to be the broken record, but again, it's, we've already talked about this. So we can sit here and go, oh, this is a list. I mean, it's not perfect, but it's the best we got. And then we all say, okay. We all say, okay, I promise you, we are going to get to the bottom of this. I know, you were very excited. So here's the thing.
Yes, dinner, you should have come.
I, I got it. We're trying to do this, but you gotta let us work through the solution. That's why we got the town council.
I know why he wants.
Here's the thing, so what, obviously, we all know why he wants this, we all know why.
What was I saying?
Yeah.
We all know why we want the building, he wants the building permit first so they can sell the property, build on the property, sell the property, get rid of it, and then bail on the, on the project till it ends.
It's a little deeper.
It's deeper than that.
Well, I'm going to tell you what it is.
So hold on.
So when the road isn't up to par.
And he's gone. Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was just saying.
So, cause, cause if he does this and then it goes to town.
It's literally what I was just saying. Because here's the problem, is everybody is waiting to speak and not listening. Okay, because what I'm saying here is where, where I'm going with this is if he gets the building permit first before he does the list, he gets rid of the property and bails before the road is done, and then he's gone and we have nobody to hold accountable for this. So what I've been trying to get to the bottom of is what is the consequences if this list does not get done? What are the consequences? Because otherwise, we're going to agree to this list and then we're going to be here three hours, three years later.
The other reason is, he doesn't want to do the work and have us constantly criticize it while he's building the house.
Right.
Because he's still there.
Right.
So he, he does, he must do it at the end period, even if he.
Well, worst case, you know, I mean, it seems like if he puts a road in and doesn't meet the town standards, I mean, the road will probably be finished in everybody's eyes, but will be accepted by the town. It might just stay a private road, right?
Yeah.
If it doesn't meet the specs of the town, why is the town going to be, stick themselves on the road that's not going to be up to par? So just, just worst case, it'll just stay a private road.
Because here's, here's what I'm, what I see here going on. I've been an owner, my wife and I have owned this property for the last 17 years. We've been waiting for this road to be finished. Nobody seems to know how this is going to happen. Here we are at the end of our tenure here in Halifax. We're planning to move on. I'm retiring very soon. I'm sick and tired of waiting this to, for this to be done. We've paid our taxes. We've done everything we're supposed to do on our end and you fine folks are sitting there going, well, what are the consequences going to be? Seems to me that we're the ones bearing the brunt of the consequence here. And I'm sick and tired.
Well, I understand, we understand.
So something needs to happen.
And somebody's going to be only going to.
That's what we're trying to figure out.
Well.
It's a total different, it's a total.
Trying to figure out is how, is what consequences the builder is going to have, the owner's going to.
No, if he doesn't finish the list, is what I'm saying, okay? Because the list is to do the road, and if the list, if the list does not get done to do the road, which is what you taxpaying residents deserve, what are the consequences? Because if it were any, if it were, if it were you and you were the builder, right? And somebody said, put up 300 grand plus the cost of building the property, and when you sell this stuff, you're actually going to take a loss, you'd go.
Didn't he look that he's not going to take a loss?
I'm just saying hypothetically, if you're the person.
Right now.
Unfortunately, it was a whole different player involved that did the, made this whole mess to begin with.
Here's, here's what we can, here's what we can take to the bank quite literally. If there was money that was worth it on the other end of this project for him, this would already be done.
But, right.
But if there isn't, then that's why this has not yet been done. Either there's no money to do it or there's no money at the end that is making it worth the, the projects to complete. Now, the thing that sucks is all of you guys have to, you're bearing the brunt of this financial decision that this other individual is making. It is affecting your livelihood, which 100% is not fair. You are taking all the liability and all the risk while this individual just goes, or else.
And all the loss.
And all the loss. So what I'm trying to get to the bottom of, or what we are trying to get to the bottom of is agreeing to this list is not good enough for me. That's what I'm trying to say. That's why I'm trying to tell you is this is not acceptable to me because we did it two and a half years ago and thought we were making progress. Now we're not. So what I'm trying to say is, is if he doesn't do this, what are the consequences? Are we going to find him? I don't, can we find him? What are the, I don't think. I know, and see that our town's going to say no.
He said earlier, it's beyond that.
Right, so then we go, all right, now.
Let's, let's listen.
Did I try to answer, did I try to answer the question?
Yeah.
Did I try to answer the question? The consequences have to be that he does not get a building permit.
Well, that's already here.
And does what he's supposed to do, he gets the building permit.
And what if he doesn't care about the building permit and just says, screw that, I don't care about the building permit. I only paid 25 grand for it anyways. Um, I bought it off family, so it doesn't really matter. I'll just let it sit there and rot and I'll write it off on my taxes as a loss overall. And then the 17 lots or the seven, however many lots, the four lots that are down on pasture lane have to deal with paying a thousand dollars a month in property taxes on top of having to redo their suspension every year because they have to drive over, you know, through the Mojave Desert. That's, that's the problem.
And that, in, in those circumstances, then this, this guy, this lot, one lot owner is not the answer to the problem there. So there, but would have to be some other answer.
Should we condition the town to accept the lot?
So I think that's what we're looking at. We're, we're, if, if the, if the owner of Lot 1.
We can't.
If the owner of Lot 1 is not a solution to this problem, what are our other options? That's, I think, what we're trying to get to, right? Or am I crazy?
Well, I think I tried to tell you this, there aren't a lot of other options.
There's got to be.
And that's, that's a big part of the problem.
There's got to be.
Because this is so far down the line in time that all this stuff happened like a long time ago. The only other thing that I can mention to you is that the town does have a bylaw that's set, that's for temporary repairs on private ways. It's section 147 dash six of the town bylaws. And I'm not saying that the, that the town would be willing to do that or spend the money or anything like that, but there are, there are very few, if any, um, other alternatives. That's, that's the reason why I think it's worth while talking to these guys.
I agree. I think we try to go for the best deal we can get with this guy and see if we can hammer out something that we can live with. If we can't, we can't.
Yeah, so I think, um, obviously.
I thought that's what this list was.
Yeah, that's what it was. So obviously, option one is that's the fastest route to getting this done. Unfortunately, you flip to the back page, or the backside of this page, and we know it's going to go, no chance in hell that's actually going to happen. So then the answer is, the backup is or else. And if you're him as a business owner and the answer of or else is no consequences, then I sit there and I go, I'm never going to see you. I'm, I'm not going to see you at your Christmas. I don't care. And that's not fair for you guys. So now what we're trying to say is, and unfortunately, here's the deal, sue the town. You know what the town's going to do? Exactly what you just said, because they're going to call our town council and say, you know, nothing we can do. Nothing we can do.
You've been kicking this through this planning board for 17 years, this.
Not for nothing, but all of us have only been here for the most of max.
That's why I always say you cannot deviate from the bylaws.
However, that does not solve, I agree 110%.
Solve the problem.
It doesn't.
I understand, it doesn't.
But neither is, and here's the deal, if you sue the town, you're just going to waste your own money on lawsuits.
You know.
So the problem is.
What are you supposed to do? Just take, just take a hit on our properties?
I, I think we still try to hammer out a deal.
But we haven't seen over two and a half years, so what's his timeframe?
Hold on, hold on, ready?
What's the timeframe?
Right now, the market is still moving. To me, getting a lot at, okay, hold on, Rick. What do you think it, just as a ballpark, I'm not going to hold you to it, but like roughly, how much do you think that this work would? We're just talking like.
157, well, probably years ago.
No, this list, how much would it cost this list?
Yeah, like, I mean, honestly.
To do this list? Oh, I haven't got a clue. I'd have to look into it.
Okay, but not even like some sort of, and I, I'm just asking.
300 grand, 400 grand, 500 grand?
Well, he's not doing that as much as you would normally.
Yeah, like I said, in 18, it was 157, but he's not doing.
Yeah, but that's old now.
But prices have.
Yeah, and now, now it's right 400 grand.
So what do you think that the price, I mean, like.
When you guys were talking about, he wants to do, not do the second course.
Yeah.
There's a sidewalk there they want finished and they're going to do three courses on that. That sidewalk's not going anywhere.
Right.
There's nothing on the pawn street. Why don't you just do away with the, give him a little bone, not a bone or whatever, but.
I hear what you're saying.
Okay, don't do the sidewalk, put the other course on the, the street. So at least you get the three.
So then the three coats without the sidewalk, but then.
What's going to be cheaper, doing the, you know, eliminating the sidewalk and doing the other coat on the street?
It depends on if he's going to have.
I mean, if it was my street, I'd want, I'd want the street done right.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I wouldn't be quick and concerned about a sidewalk.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Let me go, let's go down this rabbit hole real quick, if you don't mind, just so that we can all be on the same page. How much do you think this list would cost? Let's just say for the sake of it, 350,000?
I haven't got a clue. I couldn't even.
What was it back in?
157. Oh, 157.
At least 50,000 to that.
Okay, so, so hold on, so ready? Just follow, follow me down this. So let's call, all in this list is 250,000 dollars. Fair? How do, how much to build a house on the lot?
That's all the math.
At least 300, 400.
So, so we'll add 400,000, just for the sake of this conversation. So now if I'm the developer, this guy.
It's a loss.
I'm 650,000 in to this property, plus the 25 I paid for, plus the property taxes, whatever, however you want to do it on a balance sheet. Now, I get it. This does not matter for your standard of living. I'm talking about a mathematical balance sheet. I'm into this thing for 700,000 dollars. That means I have to sell this house plus paying the real estate agent, plus the sales tax on all this for about 850,000 dollars. Now, you're not going to be able to build an 850,000 dollar house after spending 400,000 dollars to build it on that lot. That's why this, this list is not getting done.
I don't know, because.
You know, I think everybody understands that sixth grade math.
That's what I'm saying. Well, I'm not saying.
But, but so.
Here's, here's the problem. This, this whole thing's been going on for, for 17 years. There's been absolutely no resolution about this. So once again, we, it falls back on us. We're the ones who bear the brunt of the problem here. We're the ones who are bearing the consequence, not Mr. Paquette and his, his company. He gets to walk away, okay?
It's not fair.
It's not fair. So this is why we're here. This is, the, the town is supposed to be looking after this. The town is supposed to be managing this. Nothing's been done, absolutely nothing's been done about this. I want to sell my property and get the hell out of here, quite, quite honestly. And I don't want to have to lose money.
I couldn't agree anymore. And the reason for the sixth grade math was so that we could stop talking about all of the reasons why this, agreeing with this guy is not going to happen. Do you understand? That's why, it's not, it's not to, it's not.
So where do we go from there? So where do we go from there? So, okay, agreeing with this guy's not going to happen. This gentleman on the screen up here tells us we can't do anything at all. So once again, we are left holding the bag, again, after paying, I don't know, 13,000 dollars a year in taxes for the past 17 years?
Why?
Enough to pay for that road?
For sure.
So should we all beat our taxes every year?
So at the end of the day, unless somebody wants to buy that property from him and do this deal and then develop the house and that, on that development themselves and just call it a wash out of the kindness of their own heart, unfortunately. And, and I hope, obviously, you realize I'm, my passion and enthusiasm on this topic is in your defense. It is not in.
I appreciate that.
The sixth grade math is not to be demoralizing or, or in any way shape or form that. It's to basically say from a business owner's perspective, that's why this is going to get done. So let's talk about what's next.
Yeah, but hold on. There's also the whole fact that you, right now, as long as the market stays up, which every sign is that it's going to stay up for the next time being. If he built this house and he was into it for the math that I'm doing of 625 and he sells it for 750, which I can see all day long. I mean, we're, we're, we're selling new houses at crazy amounts of money on main roads. He still has the ability to do it, but the longer he waits, that pitfall is coming quicker.
Here's the problem with it though, is that's basically a break even deal.
So what, he has his conscience clear, clear, and then everybody else, right? To me, that's, I'm sorry, my conscience and ethics.
You're, you're different.
Yeah, well, everybody should have ethics.
Well, we're not talking about personal feelings. We're talking about business.
Business should have ethics.
He must have done it. Well, I'm sure he does.
Well, yeah, everybody should have.
I, I'm just saying.
I can also send you things, their potential buyers, to do now, to ask attorney Houston, did she send that along? To find out, because we want to know who's supposed to be maintaining, because we don't know anymore because the covenant's nothing of the past. Who's supposed to be maintaining the road? Who's supposed to be maintaining the water retention?
The developer.
Okay, but he's not doing that, so can you find him for that? Like something, you have to be able to do something. You basically can't just go.
So hold on, we have to be very careful.
No, I'm sorry.
Hold on, let's be very careful.
Because I have one other thing to say.
Just be careful not to point it at us because we're not the ones that have done this, right? We're trying to get to the bottom of it.
Two years ago.
But you represent the town.
Correct, correct.
I'm on board too, so I get it. But two years ago, when this gentleman was ready to go, he went in to get his building permit and he was told by the. he went in to get his building permit, and he was told by the building inspector at the time, I'll buy it off you, but I'm not giving you a permit.
Okay.
Wait a minute, who are we talking about?
Excuse me, he said that, Mr. Paquette, said that in a meeting, it is in a recording.
Yeah?
He said that the building inspector at the time would not give him the permit, but offered to buy the property from him. That is why he wants the permit first. That is why he wants the permit first. So, that is on the town, because your building inspector at the time.
Yeah, well, you better be careful making those accusations.
I'm not gonna give, let alone be getting accusations, because they are true statements, they are on these minutes. And that's why he wants the building permit first. I'm sorry, he's your business partner.
Oh, oh, we wanna go down that road, dude.
All right, all right, all right. If we're trying to get this accomplished, we have to be careful.
But I'm telling you why, he doesn't want, he wants the permit first.
I understand. Well, I think, I mean, I have no prior knowledge of anything that just got thrown out of, in the air.
You were on the board when he said it.
I was on the board here, I was on the board in the meeting when he came in and agreed to this list. What we're trying to say, what we're trying to do here is to say, if he doesn't agree to this list, what happens next? Because unfortunately, the residents bear the brunt of the BS, of the loss. And that's not fair, as all, we're all residents of Halifax, we know how much we've paid to live here, right? And especially if you're trying to have an exit strategy, it's not fair for you guys. I bet my house that this list doesn't get done.
It's not gonna get done.
So, what's, so, what, so, what I've been trying to say is, what, what can we do? And unfortunately, it seems like town council's saying, there's nothing that can be done. And even if that was, even if that is on record and, and factual, which I believe you, that that said, was said, what is that? Who, who, who gets, we're still doing this.
There's only one other solution. That to get an article on town meeting floor to finish the road.
And we tried to do that two years ago, and now it's sidelined us.
Well, I don't know that one person can sideline anything with.
Well, they can, so.
Well, the good news is, said individual is no longer on any specific horse in this town. So, why don't we try that again, because.
Do we know, but Mr. Paquette's attorney's name, do we have that?
Yeah, was Spleen was the attorney's name, Rich?
Um, Matt Spleen, the attorney for the lot owner?
Yeah. Matt Spleen?
Matt, was that Matt Spleen, Rich?
That's, that is the attorney for the lot, for that one.
Okay, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, if, if we can get it back on.
How long do we have to get it on board? Because the meeting's in there.
You have until Tuesday to get it on the warrant, I believe.
How do we do that?
Final warrant.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I would have to have it quick, because the warrants got closed.
You need ten signatures to get on it, and the warrant closes Tuesday.
Well, we have ten signatures on the street, right?
Yeah.
Does it have to be on the street, or just any resident?
And Mike, hold on, is that to?
I think, but I thought the warrant had closed.
Like, so, they're printing, but, wait a minute, yeah, the warrant did close. The only, that we're doing, budget needs to be done by Tuesday in order to make the.
You'd, you'd have to talk to the town.
I think that it was May, March thirtieth, or something like that.
Well, town meeting's, what, May eleventh?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth?
Yeah.
So, it's close, I, I gotta believe the warrant's been closed.
I think so, yeah. But I was confusing it with the finance committee with the budget, because of last night's meeting.
And there's nothing we can do about that, so I mean.
You could talk to the town administrator and see if.
Because it might be a.
Actually.
Yeah, sometimes you can open a warrant, it really depends on whether or not it can be printed or not.
Can we add something to the warrant as an emergency after the close date, as long as we haven't printed yet, or no? You know what I mean?
I would tend to think not, it's after the deadline, I would tend to think not.
There we go, I figured it out, I figured it out.
Because I was gonna say. Because all I was gonna say is, is what we could do is so that they understood the severity of this, was to have a letter on behalf of planning board saying how long this has been on our list, and how, um, active we have been trying to find a solution, and to please put this at the top of your priority list to address, so that it's not just a line item to skip over and say, we don't have the money for that. I don't know what else.
Then we have to think about how we handle releasing the lot after that, but that's another story, another day.
Right.
He shouldn't get that.
But also, the lot, no, for sure not, right? Um, that would have to be anything, you know, almost like some kind of, um, lean against the lot of.
Yeah, well, we'd have to talk to Rich outside.
But again, I don't know, I just.
But again, the entire town meeting would have to be convinced to go along with this. It isn't like, just get it on the warrant, and that happens.
The last time we had a street, I think it was Lampost, came up on, um, I think. Right over that way? It was like, probably like six, seven years ago.
Was it close to Autumn Lane?
Maybe Autumn, but right over there, was it Autumn? Anyway, it wasn't a finished road, and the town didn't accept it.
Did not accept it.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a real long shot. It's just the only other thing I could think of, the, the only other direction you could possibly go.
Unless, now we're really getting far down the road. Unless the, the developer is willing to let the lot go to somebody who's willing to finish the property, so that he absolves himself of the liability.
Well, it's always that.
Crazy.
But we'd have to get the new owner out of bond, that's my opinion.
Yeah, like, if you had some crazy person.
Well, we could, we could, he probably wouldn't do it, because the bonds are too expensive, but we could have the owner post a bond. Even if we were to give him a building permit, if we had a performance.
So, if we treated him like a new buyer?
Yeah, with a.
And said, you posted a bond, to do that, and then finish the road, we'll give you your bond back, everybody wins.
They told him after this list was agreed for two years ago, that if he completed that, they would give you a bond.
I understand, but it still comes down to a balance sheet issue. He's taking all the risk for not, for set.
And what I'm saying is, I don't think he would do the bond, I don't think that's acceptable.
So, so, I think, as we're going down this rabbit hole, we know the town's not gonna accept it. Not that the town's not gonna accept it, but unless it was, hey, listen, man, do you wanna stop having to pay your attorney every time we reach out to him? Do, you're obviously not planning on developing this lot, and the town has no intention of giving you a building permit, so that you can just build on that lot and then disappear with the road still not finished. So, are you willing to open that lot for sale for somebody that is willing to come in and buy that lot in order, with the contingency that they have to assume this project before finishing the lot? And then start over fresh with somebody that has a new list of requirements in order to build that lot? Because if we don't get this gentleman off of this project, this is not getting done, and you bear the consequences, and that's not fair. So, it's either he puts up the bond, which goes back to the balance sheet of, why the hell would he do that? Or a new buyer, and the only reason why he would do that is to not have the pain of the, yeah, for it to be as annoying, to be as annoying in his back pocket and have to pay his lawyer every time we reach out. It's literally just saying, fine, you want the freaking lot, take the lot, I don't care, give me my twenty-five grand back, or whatever, for the lot, and somebody else's problem. That's lit, it's almost where it's so annoying, it's worth somebody else's to do it. But I don't see any other way, from a common sense, logistical, mathematical, business perspective, and unfortunately, the residents bear the brunt of that.
I like the idea of asking him to do a bond, um, or I like the idea of saying, hey, listen, can you bond this? And we'll give you a building permit, finish the road, or, and I have a question in a second, but. Or, I like the fact that, hey, you're not gonna do that.
Let's see, let's do it.
But in selling it, the person buying it has to have a bond.
Right.
Can we do that, Rich?
I mean, it's, it's, it sounds possible, I mean, uh, you're, that a developer can substitute different forms of performance guarantee under the sub-putting control law, you know, you can substitute a bond for a covenant, or a tri-party agreement, or deposit of funds, so it sounds theoretically possible.
I took ribbon and straws, but I'm trying to come up with something.
You'd have, you'd have to get another evaluation, what it's gonna cost to do the work on the road.
To do the work on the road, to build on the lot, because nobody's gonna buy that lot that doesn't find profitable. Nobody, nobody, if, if, let's say we could disconnect this, this person, this developer, Mr. Paquette, from this property in some way, shape, or form to start over. The person that would be interested in that property would only be interested if it was a profitable opportunity for them, including enough profit to take on the risk that if interest rates do go upside down, who knows what happens in November? We all gotta start learning Mandarin, right? And then all of a sudden, you're stuck with a hundred, you're stuck with six hundred thousand dollars worth of debt. That's a lot of risk for the kindness of my own heart, for a twenty-five thousand dollar profit. So, is it progress from where we are now? Because we're on a road here right now, we just keep going in circles, and that's all of your frustration, which is very well heard. That's why I'm trying to think of, a clean slate is the only option.
This is so.
I think the offer of that.
This is so hard to piece together, because I heard what you were saying about construction costs. It really depends on what you're constructing. Anything that, that five hundred thousand will sell.
Right.
Anything. And you're looking at construction costs of around three fifty to four hundred, or something in that price range, right? An average building lot right now, in a town like Halifax, now, regardless of whether this is a fantastic lot or not, maximum value's about two hundred. You can still get two hundred for a lot now. I know some that just sold recently for two oh five. So, you're looking in about five hundred, can you get six, six fifty for something? If you're clever, if you do a lot of the work yourself, if you don't have to sub out too much stuff? Can you make some money? Not a lot of money, but if you own the lot right, you can make some money. But I'm, I'm, you know. My understanding was, and I probably am wrong on this, I. The current owner bought it from somebody else who I believe actually took a loss on it when they sold it to him. I think it was Kamal that owned it prior.
I remember that name being, yeah.
Yeah, that was one of the, one.
I think he bought it for twenty, and probably, these numbers are probably wrong.
No, I'm gonna let him carry it.
It seems to me, regardless of whether you're gonna make on a house, I mean, is a lot worth what it's gonna cost to finish, to fix a road?
No, no, I, I agree.
That's what it comes right down.
That's the bottom line.
You'd have to get, you'd have to get the lot for almost nothing. Yep. To be able to develop.
Well, you don't know that, so you know what's gonna cost, you know, with this list here, what's it gonna cost?
So, that's why the only reason why this would, this new, fresh start would work is if it was just too much of a pain in the butt for Paquette.
Yeah.
Because to say, you gotta basically give up the lot.
He just gave it.
Right, give up the lot, or even for, sold the lot for twenty-five grand, or whatever he bought it for.
He screwed back his money.
Just get his money back, walk away, you walk away from this, this is no longer following you around like a black cloud, and God forbid you ever meet, see the guy at Harmony Liquors, I don't think he'd make it out of the parking lot, right? Because without having to have a conversation.
I mean, I've spoken with him, I've spoken with him on the phone a couple of times.
Yeah.
Because, you know, he feels like he's stuck between a rock and a hard place too.
For sure.
You know, I get it, but.
So, so, if we're thinking about it, it goes, you almost have to get the lot for what you paid for it, just to give him, make him clean and let him go home. And then you have this plot of land, which, between the land and the construction resale, would wipe out what the cost of the road and the construction and the building would be. It's a clean slate, but who wants to take on all that risk for a, just a, a twenty thousand dollar gain?
Yeah, because the only way you can do it is to cut into your profit margin on the house.
I don't know, I mean, like, think about this, Tina has.
But he can recover this to five percent.
Tina has lots on the market, um, for nine hundred and.
Yeah, but this is a huge, that house is huge.
No, I understand, but if a house sells on that, well, on that street for that much, and we're selling houses on main roads, like, think about it, seven fifty, eight hundred, eight, eight twenty-five, there is some profit margin in there.
A lot of profit in some cases.
That's, do you see what I'm saying? And they're just standing colonial, I would never do it.
It's a risk versus reward competition, and unfortunately.
Right.
Motion part of it, this isn't fair.
Like, we're something, like, right now, there's fourteen houses under agreement in Halifax, and that's, that's more than what we ever carried ten years ago.
I think our only option at this point is to go back to Mr. Paquette, Paquette.
I'm sorry.
And ask if he's willing to sell the lot for whatever he received for, or whatever he paid for the lot.
Five thousand, actually, from Mr. Paquette.
Oh, is that what you're saying?
So, that may have, which is Kamal, I believe, bought it for twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Then he sold it back to the original builder for twenty-seven thousand, and then this guy bought it for five thousand.
Okay, so, crazy, call me crazy. Are you willing to allow the lot to be for sale for five thousand dollars, knowing that when we resell it, when it goes back on the, the listing, that whoever buys it, the contingency is going to be, you can, you can get this lot for nothing, but you gotta finish the road?
And I advertise it.
You see where I'm going with this?
Well, I can't, sitting here.
Am I crazy? Saying that out loud, does that seem like a healthy solution? Because I gotta be honest with you, otherwise.
I have a buyer tomorrow.
I'm open to all other options, but the one I'm not willing to settle for, after two and a half years of representing this town, as you said, is more of this. Because I feel your, I don't feel your pain, but I hear it, and I can't come up with, I, nobody else has come up with anything else.
No, I like, I'm seconding your idea.
His attorney's relative walked to me and he goes, what the hell, I didn't know we had streets like that in Halifax.
So.
If this particular proposal, for lack of a better word, makes him whole, and he can walk away, if he's the only stumbling point here, I don't have a problem with it.
But the problem of it will be is how, how, yeah, how attractive is it to a potential?
A lot for a bond?
Yeah, but you gotta know what it's gonna cost.
Yeah, but you probably know what it's gonna cost to finish the road.
I know, but.
If you can finish a road for a hundred and fifty grand, yeah, the lot's worth a hundred and fifty grand, right?
Now, here's, here's what.
To me, it seems like a no-brainer. If he's only into it for five grand, I can't understand why.
Here's what may work.
Right now.
Is if you're basically gonna get that, if this, if we did this, and it was, he's, he may not, but let's just say, he goes, you know what? It's worth me to just get hold, so I can walk away, so I don't have to talk to you people every day. Maybe that's what he wants, okay? If that's the case, if I'm looking to build a home, not as a developer, but to live there, long-term, fifteen-plus years, it may be worth it to me to say, if I can get this street done, and this list done, for a reasonable price, I get the lot for free, and I can build the home that I wanna live in, now it's an even wash, but where I'm gonna make my money is over the longevity of being there, with appreciation and longevity of the mortgage and the milk going down and.
Yeah, but you're not getting a lot for free if you have to fix, if you have the news.
No, what I'm saying, if you had to pay for the lot, and the house, and the street, that's an absolute no-go. But if you're basically getting the lot for free, the lot, the cost of the lot and the cost of the street are wash.
Yeah.
So, if I'm there as a resident, it may make sense. If I'm there as a developer, it's too much risk and not enough profit.
Well, that's what I was saying, a lot's still worth two hundred.
Okay.
Pretty much.
On my, okay, so is the septic system designed?
Yes.
And it's approved for a four, or a three?
Four.
This could, depending on the road cost, it could still work for this guy.
So, we have options, right? At least now we have options. We can go to him and go, here's the deal, all right? Finish this first, and then we can all go away.
Okay.
Right? And you can make your profit, and you can just buy, build the house, and the market's still up, and interest rates are setting by the end of the year, and that's option one, let's do that. But that's what we were gonna do two and a half years ago, when the cost of doing the street was sixty percent of what it is now. So, that's option one, and he may go, sure, and then everybody's gonna have to accept that and go on blind faith, even though we know that that's not true. And if he said, and if he doesn't follow up, one of the consequences, nothing. So then, option two is the second scenario that we just came up with. Okay, well, if you're not willing to do this, are you at least willing to let the lot go for what you paid for it, so that it's just not on your balance sheet anymore? And let us move on, and then propose the next purchaser?
I just wanna pose something to Rich. Rich, if we were to go with the, give him his building permit, and he'll do the road work afterwards, is there anything we can do to encumber him? To put any, you know, any kind of a lien, or, other than a bond, or is there anything we can do to deliberately force him at the end of the project, so he can't squirm a little?
Permit for a bond?
In terms of more.
Not, not that I know of, but let me make this very, very clear. My advice to the board is to not give him the building permit before he does the work.
Yeah.
My advice, if you, if you made an agreement with this guy, the agreement would be, do the work. Then you get the building permit afterwards.
Right.
Let's, let's do this. Let's pose to him, if he were to, to finish the work as per the original agreement, and then we'll give him a building permit, and see what he says at this point.
That's like what I said.
So now, okay, so let's, let's wrap this up.
Two years ago.
Let's wrap this up. Which is what we did two years ago, but things have changed, so maybe he goes, okay, fine.
That's, that's what I'm saying, I think we have to do this incrementally, because there's too many scenarios.
And then the second option is, then you gotta let the thing go and we'll just get you, you somehow get, we know how to get him.
So in the meantime, we're trying to sell our house. The yard looks like shit. I mean, he's got bushes everywhere. We have prospective buyers coming in going, what the hell is this? What do I do? The town, I understand, you know, it's not accepted by the town, so they're not gonna pull that out. So now that's my expense to clean up.
Biabilities.
The way normal.
Can I take that brush and dump it down on his, what?
Here's the thing, I don't think anything's gonna happen fast enough to really help you in this, unfortunately. You know, I, I don't wanna put it in those terms, but I, I just don't see anything, regardless of what scenario we adopt here, that's gonna jump in and take care of you in the short run.
No, you're right, you're absolutely right. However, if we can come to some sort of written agreement.
You can at least pass that along.
At the very least, you know, the listing broker can say, when, when a prospective buyer asks these questions, we have some answers.
We have an agreement.
We have something in writing, something signed, something legal, something notarized, whatever it happens to be.
Yep, I, I hear you completely. I, I think, I don't wanna cut you off.
No, you were talking, I was reading.
I was gonna say, I, I think we could have Rich pose to them what we just talked about again. Do the roadwork, we'll give you a permit.
Build your house.
Build your house and move on, and let's see what we get for a reaction, we're just trying to do it quickly. And see if we can get something back from them quickly. And if that doesn't work, then we can, I don't know.
Offer option two, because really what option two is, is a new buy.
At least when we ask him, get some kind of a timeline of a response?
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah. And also, we could also say, you know, in a show of good faith, if you really do agree to this list, as a show of good faith, could you please knock out the number one thing, which is not make it look like crap?
Yeah, thank you.
I think you be careful, because I keep forgetting we're recording.
It's on YouTube.
Yeah, on YouTube, right? So, so, no, you can do it, I can't, I don't think I can, right? So, but ultimately, if that's the case, and he does agree to this, and we say, can you just please go clean up? Because you're, you're really kinda knocking down everybody's property value here. And he's not, he's not an idiot, so he's gonna know that there's a house for sale on a lot.
That's a slouch too, so it's.
For sure. So then the option two is, is that it would be to propose for a new buying situation, but ultimately, a new buyer's situation is the situation that he's in right now.
Yeah, and five grand isn't gonna be a big difference.
So it's like, it's, it's options, but it's not.
I, I think we at least have to try to put this together one more time.
Thousand percent.
At least to get the street cleaned up, and something in writing which would help you for the next buy.
It would have to be, otherwise there's no consequence, right? It has to be, in writing. Has to be contract.
Yes, real estate has to be in writing, or it's not, that's the point.
How, how would, oh, I'm sorry.
One of the things that I think can be done, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, because I've been on boards in previous years. But at any rate, if he says, okay, that sounds good, because he said that sounds good before, we know the guy's a liar, day one. But now we say, okay, you say you're gonna do this, when? And if you do it, don't do it by when, then we are gonna take and make some kind of financial commitment against you.
But he's saying that we can't assume what we can.
And I don't know why you can't. If you had a contract, or we're gonna sue you civilly, let the people go right after, okay? Which they can do.
They certainly can.
Alright.
No caution more to do that than we would put the road in. So you see what I'm saying? If I'm him, I'm completely protected. If I'm him, I'm going.
Go ahead.
Or else, I pick else.
He said, I'll sit on my twenty, and then the wall will be dead.
So what I'm saying is, instead of beating our heads against the wall, let's go back to him and say, okay, like we did two and a half years ago, here's the list, but now we want it in writing. And secondly, as a show of good faith, step one is come and clean up the crap. Right? Because you're depreciating people's value of their homes. Okay? So if you really do agree to this, and it is in writing, because then you'll have that.
Let's make sure Rich knows what we're talking about in terms of the debris.
That's what I'm saying, just make sure.
Yeah, oh yeah, no, of course, so I, I think we're still trying to norm through the logistics.
Start, your street number again?
Five.
Five, five. I, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, Rich, when he started to do the work years ago, or whenever that was, because I wasn't here, he left a lot of debris on Lot Five that he's never gotten back to clean up. So we wanna try to get that incorporated into an agreement to get done quickly.
And it's not just your lot, right? Isn't it a bunch of all lots?
No, it's the water retention.
It's just a lot.
The water retention areas are on our property.
Water retention is on our property, and that's where he's pulled it. And we, and we requested that Highway be able to go do it, but he can't.
Right.
Yeah, because that's a private road, I guess.
How about we ask Rich to put together some kind of agreement?
Just like you wanted with the road, but he can't.
This, 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 did the same situation. Would you, would you feel to bring this all home?
Yeah.
At least for tonight, right?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I say this?
No, no, absolutely. Let's, let's go.
Would you feel comfortable with having our town council go to his lawyer and say, here, we agreed to the list that you initiated with us, which was provided to us. We would like this agreement to be in writing, and in a show, sign of good faith, we would like for, on Lot Five, for that debris to be cleaned up, right?
And removed.
And removed, cleaned up and removed.
Yeah.
Okay? And then, once you finish this list, soon as that last check, that last box is checked, you get your building permit for Lot One. We start there, and then we will know by the next meeting whether or not that was accepted or not. Is that acceptable progress for at least tonight?
It is, yeah.
I think that's the best we can come up with.
Is that, is that cool with you? Town Council?
Yes, that, that's good. I just wanna make sure that we're clear as to exactly what, what the work is. You know, there's that punch list, and what, at this point, they're proposing is the things that say to be completed on that.
In blue. Yes. Oh, on our, on our list there.
That's what we're talking about, the to be completed.
So that, that's where I'm gonna ask Steve. Steve, have you been out here recently to say that the yellow things on the list haven't deteriorated?
I haven't seen that list this much.
Can you, can you go out and maybe report to have some whether or not the, or Cody Dave has some more, Danielle has some?
First move, so we can get back to town council.
Yeah, just whatever is yellow, make sure that was done.
And that it's not deteriorated to the point that we can let that go. And that would move everybody, I think, because he's probably afraid that if he does this, and then it doesn't get accepted by the town meeting because of a lap, so let's make sure that, you know what I'm saying?
Yep. Well, you gotta report that, so.
Yeah, most of the tests have been done.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
So case in point, uh, case in point. Uh, he's saying on, on number eighteen, remove trees and brush from basin, four bay and berms, it's listed as completed?
Yeah.
That's the number one thing that we are trying to get done on the new list, because he cut all that stuff down and left it on Lot Five. So it's in fact not completed.
All's not coming to us then.
After further review of, only, only numbers one and two are completed.
And we're gonna have Highway Department go out, double check, make sure that all the yellow is still okay, and not deteriorated, if you will. And then, and then we'll get back to you by the beginning, like, Monday, Tuesday, and give you our list that, yeah, by Highway.
That sounds, that sounds great, that sounds great.
Okay.
Very good, thank you, Rich.
Okay.
Thank you for, sorry you had to listen to that rotary of death.
Hey. No problem.
Although you're a lawyer. You're used to it, right?
That's your first rodeo, right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright.
Have a good night.
You too.
I know, we give it a good try, I'm just so frustrated.
I don't know.
Well, I appreciate it, we got further than we have.
Pepper.
Well, to be honest with you, it was, it was, I think, only like my fourth or fifth meeting when this guy came in and did this. And so I was like, look, that's, we're making progress, I should have done this earlier, right? And then we're here two and a half years later, and some of that's been done.
I thought I was gonna find a way to come.
You know what I mean? It was like the, the rabbit foot or something.
Regardless of how the road ends up, I mean, it's certainly not gonna be perfect until what standards we would like. But we've gotta get the best thing we can get, and get this at least started to be over with, right?
It's, it's atrocious.
Yeah, no, I've been there, I, I've seen it. Alright, so, I guess, there's another question here that we're not gonna be able to answer?
No, that covers it for me.
Okay.
Fine, I appreciate your time, I know I kept you later than you wanted to be.
No, 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 that's alright, if we can make some progress, it's certainly worth it.
So you're telling me that the Highway Department is gonna come down and.
Yeah.
Make an assessment as to what?
Yeah, he's gonna take a look to see what was completed, what still needs to be done, and how it correlates to the list.
Do you need to equal one of us to do that, or?
No, I can.
I'll try a list, because I need my own.
Alright, if, if that's okay, we're gonna move on.
Can you tell us what the list is?
Thank you guys, alright, thank you.
Thanks, thanks. Have a good night.
The other thing is, we have.
Four zero.
Sure, sure.
It's the agenda. Oh, God.
We have the approval letter for the site plan for sixteen hour Plymouth Street. Need a vote to sign it, I guess. Brendan was not here for that meeting, so he doesn't have to vote.
Oh, on the minute?
No, on the approval letter for the subdivision, which I had in my possession here at one point, I don't know where it is now. Signatures. Can I have a motion to?
Can I read it?
Oh, this is the extension. Where is the?
How come they are asking for an extension here, but they deleted off of conservation?
There it is, yeah. Where is the other one? Could've sworn it was.
Can we have our email announced, though?
Well, I'll tell you what. How about we just get a vote authorizing the chair to sign the letter for the approval for four sixteen hour Plymouth Street? That way, when we find it, we can sign it, nobody else has to get dragged up.
That's what it says right here, Chair, my signature needed, that's it. That's what it says.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna participate in voting for that.
Well, it's already been approved, so it doesn't matter. Alright, extension. Front Dyke Development is looking to extend until what, sixty days? May second, along with a sixty day extension request.
So that it would have been May second?
Yeah.
And they're going for sixty days, which is July second. Oh, hold on, July first.
Alright, so I guess we need a.
But our meeting is until July fif, oh, wait a minute.
I don't have a calendar for this.
I do, it's just here, but, but still, we have meetings before that, so.
So we're gonna extend it until July, what, fifth?
First.
First.
Because thirty, thirty-one.
Okay, need a motion to extend the site plan extension for.
Two sixty-six.
Two sixty-six Mount Pontus Street until July first?
Yep, sixty days.
Two thousand twenty-four. Can I get that motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
I, I was here, right?
Well, this is on the One Dyke extending.
Second?
Yeah, so.
Moved in second.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
The site plan review for two sixty-six Mount Pontus Street until July first, two thousand twenty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Eyes have it, unanimous?
I'm sure, I wanna leave out.
All those in favor?
Is that one for the two sixty-five, though, that we need to vote it? Oh, both of them are two sixty-six. But July first date there too. Oh, is it?
This one good?
Site plan, and then what's? How come it's two of them, that's all I'm saying? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
How come it's two?
I don't know.
Is it just a copy? It just looks like a copy.
Oh, this one's actually, looks like the official one, because it's signed right now. Let's put this one on. I don't know that we need to sign that one.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure that everything else attached to this.
Well, what does it say? Does it tell us why it needs the extension on there?
Where's?
There's a email. Renderings.
We need some additional time to complete the renderings. Alright, I can get signatures on this, it would be a wonderful thing, watch my gel pen might be leaking a little bit.
Alright. And then meeting minutes?
That's the last thing on your chart.
I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, as written.
Do I, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Rich? Moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes for Thursday, March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Eyes have it, unanimous?
Oh, I thought you were handing it in. Sorry.
I thought you were a mathlete. Which wouldn't have advanced you five facts.
Again, watch my pen, it's looking good.
See if I can do your hand a little bit?
Oh.
What's on the first?
Oh. Oh, yeah.
What's the last one?
Do we have any correspondence?
There is no correspondence.
Wow.
So in light of that, I will entertain a motion to talk to Steve.
I just wanted to give it on record about, um, Dealey Way, with that second manhole that goes, so we have the towns take over it. So it's not a non-accepted road that.
Yeah, I think what we're gonna have to do is try to reach out to.
His government?
You know, he's deceased.
His government?
Yeah.
Really, when?
Not too long ago.
That's what I was gonna say.
So I, I'm trying to, Danielle's not here, I can't remember if she said that somebody reached out to her, um, a family member, or if she heard them having reached out to somebody else. So when she comes in Monday, I will talk to her and see if she actually is her familiar address. Um, and then if we can get some contact information, at least we can get that train starting to roll a little bit. I don't know how that's gonna work out pretty similarly, I think, because that road's at least as old.
How many manholes are there? Is that the second, that the last one?
There's a.
They already fixed, they already fixed one, right?
Now, no one came to?
Yeah, they fixed one, then the second is, it's not funny, but I think it was Mr. Chapman, or Chipman, whatever the guy is.
Yeah, Chipman.
Chipman.
Chipman Chetts.
Yeah. So I walked in with him, and I said, this one's gonna be the next one, and it is, so.
What'd they, what'd they do to fix the first one? Just put another plate on it and?
Yeah, they actually put a manhole cover.
Oh, they put a cover on it?
Yeah. And then tied it over.
So it's still below grade, the cover?
Yeah, it's still. But at least it's not gonna collapse.
Yeah, well, that's all you can do at this point, I think it's safe.
But that's another one, the sidewalk's not the right width, or anything like that. I think we should have a sit-down with anybody involved with all these non-accepted roads, and figure what the town can do without.
When he was alive, he's.
There's certain things the Highway Department, like some of these detention ponds and stuff, now that machine I have, we'd be able to do some of the work, so we could say, okay, do the rest of the road, get the roads buried, so we can get them accepted.
Yeah.
Instead of just keep on, like you said.
Kicking the can down, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we need to do something.
But there is, there's a lot of roads that aren't accepted.
Yeah, well, still, we were talking about Autumn Lane earlier, that never got finished either.
Yeah, Harrow, that, Harrow Road, that's the last.
Sherwood Extension.
That's the one that didn't get accepted, there was one or two things they did, but they never came back to get accepted.
Yeah. And somehow they got part of Chauva on release.
Yeah.
What were you gonna say, Rick?
Well, I was gonna say, when he was alive, the, compared from Delia Way, he said it wasn't worth it to finish the road, the lot wasn't worth that much.
Same. And it stinks, because I get all the calls at the, at our office, people like, these guys all upset at me, and it's like, yeah, it's a tie, I can't.
Well, that's the hard part, this is like, don't, don't say it's our fault. I get it, we do represent the town, but obviously, we're here, hearing the conversation to try to fix it, not to say, too bad, suck it up, I mean, we're trying to get to the bottom of it. Trust me, we don't wanna have.
It's just like I said from day one, when I first got on the board, it's just, it's a bad deal to begin with, and like even what the lawyer, just the, you know, town council just said, they said, nothing you can do about it, it's been too long.
Twenty to twenty-five years?
I've been hearing that since the, I think the first meeting I was on the board, past your lane.
Yeah.
And same, same thing back then, that's where every time I would just have town council come and talk about it, it's like, bend down that road, and they all say the same thing, nothing you can do. You know, and it's, I feel bad for the homeowners, I mean, what do they want us to do? We, you know, yeah, we're on the board, we want the board.
If we have a little sit-down, we wanna get on the same page on what we can afford for the town, to get these roads accepted, because it is unfair that these people are paying this tax.
I mean, if the town had to finish the roads, there's no way that would possibly be ridiculous, because.
And how can you justify, you know, these other roads falling apart, and I go in and fix the road, this road is all compared to somebody that's been living here their whole life, like mine, that we can leave, well, but I know it's not your fault.
I drove down here.
One ice street, one first street.
I drove down here with.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, I told you. But I don't believe, but I don't blame that on the highway.
There's some streets that I intentionally go out of my way to not go down, with my wife's car, because I'm like, I know that's not worth going down that way.
South Halifax has its share, yeah. Huxton Center, none of those roads were ever built.
Right, and that's the hard part, I mean, people take it out on me, because I'm in the position, I knew that was gonna happen anyway, but people have to understand that it started a long time ago.
Yeah, they were farm roads.
Yeah.
And Huxton said, there's a, there's a bylaw that says you can fix, there's some bylaw about fixing a private road?
You know, it is, we can work.
One forty-seven?
On, like, Durk Road.
Yeah, I was like, whatever.
And it's, we can do drainage on roads two times a year.
Yeah.
But we're not supposed to do any drainage work on it, nothing like that, just fix what has to be fixed, and we go to the selectmen to get them to okay certain things also, which I just thought, but, once, like I said, you open that door.
I know, well, my road needs some patchwork.
Yeah.
Come over and do that.
Every single, I don't think it makes sense to get the residents in a room, because then that's gonna be, you don't want them all ganging up.
No. Sit down and say, okay, so, I guess we can afford that, but the paving part, I don't think we should do. But I don't know how we can use the sidewalks. Like I said, that sidewalk on that road, it's not going through another sidewalk anymore, it's just for that one development, and that's gonna be a bylaw for the town. That's something they can say, okay.
Well, here's the problem, then you, you know, there's always the risk of having the residents, hey, I bought it here because I knew there was gonna be a sidewalk, and now you're telling me there's no sidewalk, where's my sidewalk?
Well, we should.
I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but that's always open to the possibility. Well, safety until the lane, isn't that way of the sidewalks until the lane?
The guy won't do anything, but if you say, okay, well, take that off.
Well, we were, we were thinking about it, but we never finished the process of any.
Detention pond, take that off, we can work around that.
Well, yeah.
I think one signed, right?
Yeah, or.
That's what I mean, is that.
I don't remember, now it's a choice.
So how does that work?
We'd have to revise the site plan.
And have all the, all the owners sign off on it in front of a notary? Or a lawyer?
Well, yeah, because they bought the house with the sidewalk.
Yeah.
And so we can get to it.
That, that's where, unfortunately, the planning board let them have it.
Yeah.
It's sad.